Turn on my mic. The regular meeting of the Board of Education, which was duly noticed on May 7th, 2021, through posting a notification to the press in accordance with Wisconsin 19.84. Pledge of Allegiance, Commissioner Millar.
All right, it is my pleasure to introduce Jessica Grant Turk, who is the principal of Harrison Elementary. Mrs. Grant Turk has been an educator since 2000 and has been a member of the school district of Janesville since 2002. She's come to be the principal at Harrison in 2010 and in 2013, and was recognized by the school district of Janesville as the Administrator of the Year. Mrs. Grant Turk has three master's degrees, one in social work, one in education, and one in education leadership, licensed as a principal, director of instruction, and a school social worker by the Wisconsin Department of Public Instruction. Principal Grant Turk, please introduce your students and say a little bit about them, if you would, please.
All right. So when Mrs. Jensen said that it was Harrison's turn to have representatives come and say the pledge of allegiance from Harrison Elementary School, I sent out an email to our homeroom teachers to ask who they thought would be excellent ambassadors of our school, and both Naomi and Nolan's teachers recommended them. And so when I saw that we got recommendations from both of their teachers, I knew that they had to come forward. These hawks do an excellent job of being safe, respectful, and responsible every single day. They are very serious scholars, they take their education very seriously, and they are just an absolute delight and pleasure to have at our school. So I am thrilled to have Naomi and her brother Nolan here to say the pledge of allegiance for us here tonight.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Do I have an adoption or motion to adopt the minutes for today's meeting, May 11th, 2021? Whoops. I'm sorry, did I say minutes? I meant agenda. Thank you. Do I have a second? Okay, second. Okay, all in favor, say everybody saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Awesome, thank you. Safety message with Commissioner Herta.
Good evening, everyone. Can everyone hear me? Yep, okay. My safety message this evening is in recognition of May being Mental Health Awareness Month. So just some key messages around mental health, that one in five people will experience a mental health illness during their lifetime, and everyone faces challenges in life that can impact your mental health. Mental health is essential in everyone's overall health and well-being, and mental illnesses are common and treatable, especially as we live in the COVID-19 pandemic. We have found that it has had profound impacts on the mental health of people of all ages, and now more than ever, it is critical to reduce the stigma around mental health struggles that commonly prevents individuals from seeking help. There are practical tools everyone can use to improve their mental health and increase resiliency regardless of the situations they are dealing with. It's important to accept the situations in life that we cannot change, something I continually try to work on, actively work to process the mental struggles associated with big changes, manage anger and frustration, recognize when trauma may be affecting your mental health, challenge negative thinking patterns, and make time to take care of yourself. Knowing when to turn to friends, family, and coworkers when you are struggling with life's challenges can also help to improve your mental health, and living a healthy lifestyle and incorporating mental health tools that thrive that may not be easy but can be achieved. But by gradually making small changes and building on those successes is also key. And also, lastly, seeking professional help when self-help efforts to improve your mental health aren't working is actually a sign of strength, not a weakness. So please just remember that as we observe May as Mental Health Awareness Month.
Thank you very much, that was great, thank you. Citizen comments, do we have any citizen comments tonight? Okay, we don't. Student presenter of the Board of Education, let us welcome Emma Perry from Parker High School.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Emma, I'm a senior at Parker High School. Before I start talking about the events going on at Parker and some of our achievements over the past couple of weeks and months, I just wanted to tell you a little bit about myself. So as I said, I am a senior, I'm pretty involved at school, I play varsity volleyball, and I'm a captain of that. On top of that, I'm in a lot of clubs, I'm the president of Parker DECA, I'm the commissioner of Link Crew, I'm in several national honor societies, and I'm a class officer for the class of 2021. So I'm very happy to be with you this evening and talk about some things happening at Parker. I'd also like to take a moment to thank the school board for allowing us to resume activities despite the pandemic. It's been great for students and staff to have activities and events again this year. This weekend, starting off, we are hosting Parker Prom at Rotary Gardens from 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. We'll be crowning a king and queen for the class of 2021 and the class of 2022. Visitors will be able to tour the gardens, take pictures, and visit with friends and family in a safe and socially distanced setting. We will also have invited students at RUHS, Tagos, and Arise to join us. In addition to this, the Parker Art Department is hosting its annual art show. This year's event is a virtual show, and you can view the student art show by going to the Parker homepage and scanning the QR code, which will take you to this year's event. On top of that, the Parker FFA is hosting its annual plant sale after school and over the weekend. The students in the plant science class are doing a great job managing the greenhouse and preparing for this year's sale. So once again, that sale is open after school in this upcoming weekend. Advanced placement tests are getting ready to take their exams or have already had them. This year, our students are scheduled to take over 200 AP exams, myself being one of them, I have my last one tomorrow. And then going over to athletics, our Parker athletes have finished up their abbreviated winter and fall sport seasons, and then spring sports are on full swing as of right now. This week, boys tennis takes on Madison Memorial, track has a meet at Madison Memorial, baseball is a doubleheader at Madison West, and the girls soccer team takes on Beloit at home. Last week, Lydia Quadi and Annie Barnes, who you'll see today, were state competitors at the tennis meets. Parker won football across our crosstown rival. And last evening, Hannah Bali and Gentry Reed threw a combined no-hitter in softball against Madison West. Talking a little bit about DECA, which I'm pretty well versed in, Parker DECA placed first in our Junior Achievement Business Challenge on April 14th. The business challenge is pretty much a simulation about operating a business in a free enterprise system, so our marketing two students take part in that. Jerry Healy and Grant Vogli each won $500 scholarships to further their education. And then on top of that, for our competition, we had district competition in January, our state competition in March, and then we had one national qualifier, which was Kylie Script Check, so she did a 20-day-page business plan and then placed at nationals, so that was very exciting for us. If you're looking for a fun evening out, Parker's vocal music department is hosting the second week of Oklahoma, Thursday through Sunday. The cast and crew were featured on Channel 3's Backstage with Bruno and are getting great reviews. We have been fortunate enough to have a limited live audience that is socially distanced and follows all the rules. Their tickets last for Saturday if anybody's interested, I'm going on Thursday and I'm very excited to see them, they always do a great job. Talking a little about senior things, we are fortunate enough to resume our graduation events this spring. Last week, senior grad signs were placed at every home of every senior. We are especially thankful for JP Cullen for sponsoring the signs for every graduate in Janesville this year. The senior awards night will be held on May 19th, and this year, we are recognizing over 70 students for their academic and leadership involvement with over $200,000 worth of scholarships. Seniors will also be returning to their elementary schools on May 25th and May 26th to walk the playgrounds in their grab, caps, and gowns for our annual graduation walk. And then to end the year, seniors will end their graduation with a commencement on Friday, June 4th, at Monterey Stadium, and we will be having a live graduation this year, but we will be socially distanced and have limited seating, so it will be livestreamed as well. Thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening and share what's been happening at Parker. On behalf of the entire student body, we appreciate your support in allowing us to resume activities and be involved this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Emma. You have any questions? What, Emma, what are your plans for next year?
I'm going to UW-Madison, so I'm undecided though, so.
Okay, well, good for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too. Wonderful. Okay, I think I know what AP test she's taking tomorrow. Yeah, yeah, maybe, maybe, yeah. Okay, so we need to approve the consent agenda, and I've had a request to pull out number 2.9 about the mask mandate. And so do I have a motion to approve every, the rest of it, 2.1 through 2.8? Okay. Looks like Commissioner Audrey and then Commissioner Hanawal. All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? Okay, very good. All right, so let's talk about 2.9. Commissioner Hayworth?
So I just wanted this one pulled out, it's talking about extending the mask mandate in through July, and currently Rock County is only through June, so I would just like us to pause that and discuss it at the June meeting, given all the changes that are happening daily, hourly around COVID and recommendations and that, so I just thought we could postpone that until June.
Would that affect summer school, then?
It would, yes, it would affect summer school, because that would still be going on until.
So summer school dates are June 7th, for elementary and middle school, are June 7th through July 2nd. And then high school, summer school dates, which is primarily credit makeup, so it's a relatively small number of kids in terms of the overall summer school program, starts also on June 7th and goes through July 15th. Other than that, there's really not any other student activity going on in July, and so there's nothing else to be impacted by whether we are or aren't masked. Yeah, for the limited number that are there, most staff are home in the summer, so, except for this building mostly, so, and then some principals.
And so are you, are you, let me make sure I understand, you are asking us to just simply not make a decision about this at this point and wait until June to determine what's going on at that point? Okay? Yes, Kevin?
I understand your intent, but I think number five here in this resolution, this resolution shall take effect and be enforced after its passage and posting and shall remain in full force until July 31, '21, or at which time a potential extension or termination of this resolution shall be passed by the Board of Education for this school district of Janesville. So there, any meeting, we can have the option of.
Right.
Changing it, so. I'm not sure, I mean, your intent can be addressed at any meeting, right? So I guess I just don't.
I just don't think we need to be just doing it now, when it could be done at the, you know, if we decide not to have the May meeting or decided, then we could do it in the June and discuss it then.
Well, if we don't take action on this item, what does that mean, that there's no?
The current resolution expires at the end of the day on Friday, June 4th. So summer school starts immediately the following Monday, the 7th, and that would not, if we don't take any kind of action tonight, there would be no mask. There would be no mask, right, there wouldn't, the current resolution's through June 4th.
We don't meet until the 8th.
Correct. So then you'd be starting summer school without. Yeah, no, yeah, no, it's not, because we had put that resolution in place before the county put their order in place, so.
Okay, any further, yes?
I'm more than happy to talk about this in June, masks, to, we can wait till then, I suppose. All right, thank you.
I'm not, I'm not so sure we can wait if summer school starts.
Summer school's gonna start.
And we don't have a mask mandate in place.
Right.
And, I mean, I'm, I agree, I want to, I'm willing to talk about it every meeting, you know, and make sure that we're doing what we, what we had, I just don't think the timing of it at this moment.
Right.
Is, is, you know, I just don't think that, I think we should approve it tonight, and that we can always take it up again, you know, just to make sure that we're, you know what I mean? Okay.
Make a motion to approve this resolution.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? All right, thank you very much. Okay. Let's see here. Recognition of the high school state qualifiers.
Two different.
Sorry, we have qualifiers from both high schools, but we're gonna call them in one at a time. And so first, we're going to hear from Mr. Clayton Kruger from Parker.
Thank you.
Good evening, good evening, thanks for coming.
Hello, I'm Stephen Mickelson, Parker Girls Tennis Coach. I am here to talk about my two state qualifying one-doubles players. This is Lydia Quadi, a senior, was voted most dedicated and also was MVP. Annie Barnes is a junior, who was also voted most dedicated for her grade and was also voted MVP. They finished the year with a 10-2 record, they end up winning their sectional with a very impressive run without losing a single set, and then had a very tough match at state, but also fought really hard, and I'm very proud of them. I do want to thank all the players that I had for my girls tennis team that came out, without them, I wouldn't have had a season, and all the parents that supported us the entire way, entire way, and helped us set up many different successful events such as a subsectional, which we actually hosted this year. And I also want to thank the board for allowing us to have an amazing season. I know it was very unique, but at the same time, we're just grateful that we got to play. So thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, thank you very much, that was awesome. Okay, now we have from Craig High School, Veth McCormick? Nope. Somebody else from Craig High School.
Good evening, school board, my name is Pam Clutzen, I'm the coach for Craig Girls Tennis, and we truly appreciate the fact that you're recognizing the accomplishments of these young ladies today. They are state qualifiers. Our senior, Lucia Heiser, was the number one singles player for us. She finished the season with an 8-4 record and placed fourth at sectionals. Addison Coiman is one half of the number one doubles team. They played number two doubles most of the season and were undefeated, and then they moved into the number one spot and placed fourth at sectionals. And state qualifier Allison Grun, a junior, finished the season with only two losses, she went 10-2 and was the champion at sectionals. They are part of a team that went 7-2 this year and finished second at sectionals.
Nice.
So I'm very proud of them, thank you very much for having us here.
Okay, thank you very much, wonderful. Okay, very good. Going on here, presentation of the Elevate program, Mr. Kane.
Do you want them to stand here, or do you want them to sit down? Okay. Well, hello, everyone, good evening, everyone. If you don't know who I am, I'm Sean Kane, Assistant Principal here at Craig High School, and I'm going to spend a little bit of time here just updating you on our Elevate program, which is our business immersion program. I've got a couple of guests here behind me, I'll introduce them first, Mike Matthews, Fritz Elson, who's one of our staff members that works in Elevate, and then Emma DeStefano. And the purpose of today's presentation is you're gonna hear all their voices and their relationship to Elevate. So we'll get started. Really, the opportunity that I have tonight is to tell you a little bit about the story of Elevate. So, but first, I want to start by recognizing all the good work, and much of this work that goes into Elevate has to do with the staff members that have put in three years' worth of commitment and time and effort to develop the program. So I've already introduced Mr. Elson, he's one of our global business teachers. Brandon Miles, who's also one of our teachers as well, is not able to join us, he's out of track. And then Mrs. Habercorn, who is one of our instructors as well, who does the business communications course. So I want to first, first and foremost, recognize all their hard work and their commitment, without their work, it wouldn't be possible to do Elevate for our students. What is Elevate? I'll let you read the slide, but our story began really with a partnership with Peewaki High School about three and a half years ago. I went to the Academic and Career Planning Conference in Madison, and I saw a breakout session that was hosted by Peewaki High School and their Insight Program, and when I participated in that program, I knew we had to bring it to Craig. So about six months later, I coordinated a site visit and was able to check out inside of Peewaki, and since then, our relationship has really been established, so really excited about that relationship. It's been, it's been a mentoring and a kind of a guidance relationship where it started, and now it's grown into a clearly collaborative effort. So Elevate is our business immersion program, and it's a, it's a program where our students that are juniors and seniors at Craig High School have an opportunity to work with mentors in the field, go out and solve real-world business problems that exist in the community, and also grow their professional network and really set their career pathway. Program overview, I'll just start real quick by the program. There are four pillars to the program that make up Elevate. The first program is the instruction, so we've got some of our instructors here, but there is a real rigorous course of instruction that our students participate in, really foundational concepts of business concepts, they participate, and I'll lay out the three courses they'll participate in, but really, it's to prepare them to go into the field, the professional field, where they'll eventually work with professionals in the community on business projects and work with their network. The second piece to it is the business project. So one component to Elevate is our students, like Emma, have had an opportunity to work with real-world businesses on real-world business problems and solves, and find solutions for them. So we work with a range of businesses, and we'll introduce those projects, partners in a few moments here, but those project partners develop an eight-to-10-week project, and over that scope of eight to 10 weeks, our kids try to meet specific deliverables that they define for the project, and that's one part of that immersion piece where our students get it. The third piece of it is the mentorship, and I think this is the most rewarding piece of Elevate, both for the mentor and for the student. This is where they get to establish a professional relationship and network with our students or with our professionals out in the community, and some actually get an opportunity to really find their passion and set their career pathway, Emma will share with you. And the third piece is the community instructor, and that's one of the pieces that Mike has provided for us. Mike has been a great consultant and program supporter, and we've had many other community members, but we try to bring in professionals from the community to come into the Craig High School and grow the knowledge and foundational knowledge of our students' and business practices from the professionals in the community. So those are the four pillars of our program, and, you know, also, I want to lay out, what are the three courses that students take, participate in? So it is a year-long program, students participate in a block of three courses that make up Elevate, they're all kind of rooted in foundational business, it's kind of an interdisciplinary approach to our instruction. They participate in business financing processes, and they earn one full credit of elective. They participate in business communications, it's very similar to like a written and oral communications class, that's where they earn their core credit in English, and then there's the global business class, which is very similar to like a combination of international business and economics, and there they earn a social studies credit and a half credit of elective. So in total, students participate all year long, and they earn three full credits after they successfully complete the program. We talked a little bit about the mentorship, and then the other component to it is the business project. So that is kind of the overview, so you understand that we do have some real course rigor behind the instruction. I also want to take some time to recognize some of the immersion opportunities that our students have had. So these are just pictures from our first class of Elevate, class of 2019, and some of these photos, you see them learning from guest instructors like a professor from UW-Watewater, Chris Kranenberg. The other two questions, the other two pictures you see is a lunch and learn program that Mr. Elson has developed, where we go off-site for a full day. Now, granted, the pandemic threw a little monkey wrench into that, but we're hoping to get back to that process, where students are off-site for an entire day, and we bring the professionals to them. That gives them more of like a symposium or a conference-style experience. Some additional opportunities, we've had some entrepreneurs come in and present to class, we love the opportunity to take site visits, so our class was able to go down to ABC Supply and meet the co-founder and chairperson Diane Hendricks in her conference room, and then of course, there's always that job shadow and mentor experience. I want to take some time right now to recognize some of our mentor partners, I figured it would be a lot easier just to show you visually the type of experiences our kids have had throughout the community. As you can see, there are nonprofit organizations, small businesses that you may, I guess, frequent. We've got large-scale businesses, local businesses in Rock County and Dane County, multinational corporations where our students are really getting that rich mentor experience. So that's just a visual representation of the partners that we have had with Elevate in the first two years. Business partnerships also, again, I'll let you look through all of that, but again, the small businesses are represented, the nonprofit organizations are represented, and certainly multinational corporations are represented here as well. Program participation, I want to just let you know that our program participation remains very steady in Elevate. The first school year, we had 32 students participate in Elevate, there was a little dip in enrollment this school year, but we had 26 full students enrolled, and part of that might be when we shut down in March, we didn't, we weren't able to totally finalize the course selection process, so we took the students that we knew were in. And the next school year, we've had a little tick up in our enrollment, we've got 33 students enrolled. The first year, we had an international student who participated in the Jeep program participate, and we still are going to offer that as a kind of a Jeep incentive, right? And I think what really tells us the really strong story about Elevate is, in the two years so far, we've developed really strong relationships with 75 percent, or 75 mentors and business partners, and over two years, in the middle of a pandemic, it's pretty impressive, if you ask me. To offer a little bit different perspective in this presentation, I want to introduce Mike Matthews. Mike has been the program manager and executive director at the Janesville Innovation Center. He's got 30 years of economic development experience and business-related experience, he's been a kind of a critical piece of our team, he's been a consultant, he's been a guest lecturer, a guest presenter, and he's also worked with a lot of our small groups to help them deliver on their projects. So I'm gonna introduce Mike now, and he's gonna share a little bit of his perspective. So Mike, turn it over to you, sir.
Well, thank you, Sean, and good evening. On behalf of the Janesville Innovation Center and our Board of Directors from Janesville Innovation, Inc., which is a 15-member Board of Directors nonprofit group, I'm pleased to be able to speak to you tonight and just share some of our experiences with the program. Sean came to us the summer before the program was going to launch and shared the vision of what the program was going to entail and how they were going to connect students and projects with business, and it resonated right away. It made complete sense that this kind of an effort was taking place. What was really unique was that this was juniors and seniors in high school, and I haven't seen a lot of that kind of. haven't seen a lot of that kind of programming available in the years that I've been doing this. And we have worked closely together with Sean and the administration, the faculty, and the students. And I have just been consistently impressed with the commitment, the professionalism, and just all the good things that have come out of this program. I've had a chance to work with MBA programs at the University of Wisconsin-Madison, and I can tell you that a lot of the process and analysis and thinking that those students at the MBA level are applying to their business analysis is the same process that these students in the Elevate program are going through. And they're very, very good at it. They're impressive. They have a lot of good questions and insights, which I think for most entrepreneurs, they will tell you that there are a lot of people who can give you answers, but just bring me good questions. And the students continue to bring good questions. And one of the things that I like to do at the end of the semester or the end of a project is to talk with the students and just say, what has been your experience? What, what did you take out of this program that's different from your other course materials? And one of the things that they say, and I see it evidenced, is engagement. They engage in this in a different way. And part of that is because they are feeling accountable to their, their business client that they're working with. And so they feel like we have to be really prepared and be able to answer the questions. And so that's encouraging. And, and they also, you know, they, they, they gain an awareness of some of the really neat stories that are taking place in this city. And we have a lot of entrepreneurial businesses that are getting started, and they're growing and doing some really amazing things in the community. And so the kids get access to that. They get experience and awareness with it. But they also get to engage in the thinking of an entrepreneur. And we're hopeful that the students will be, maybe catch a little bit of the bug of entrepreneurship. And one of the things that I say about our MBA students at Madison is that not all of those, the students who have gone through an undergrad, have gone, gotten business experience, who have graduated from a program that's focused on entrepreneurship, not all of them go into entrepreneurship. In fact, very few do. But what they do do is go into established businesses, and they think like entrepreneurs in established businesses. And most business owners in the community will tell you that that's the kind of thinking we need on our team. How do we grow that top line? What are our new products and services? How do we reach new markets? And that's the kind of experience and opportunity that these kids are getting through this program. So I'm just constantly amazed at the work that they do. I appreciate the opportunity to work with them. It's a pleasure and a joy. And I just want to congratulate the school board and the team for the work that they've done. And I'd be happy to take any questions that you might have. I should, I'm sorry, I should just mention one other point, and that is, within the Innovation Center, we have a number of businesses that are getting started, and the commonality is that lots of good ideas, lots of things on the task list, not a lot of bandwidth, not a lot of budget. And so there's always projects to be done, and it's that intersection of a business's true need and value on a project, and the student's ability to take that on and to really add value to an ongoing operation based in the city, I think, has been really an extraordinary return on investment for everybody's perspective. So I'll stop at that and thank you for the afternoon.
Well, I want to keep it moving, Mike, so I'm going to turn it over.
All right.
We've got another perspective to join our presentation, and that's the student perspective. So I thought I would bring in a former Elevate student, class of 2019, 2020, Emma DeStefano. She's also a Craig class officer. Will be standing on the stage for commencement in a couple of weeks, and I'm going to turn it over to her because I think she's got a unique story to tell as well. So Emma?
Hello, everyone. My name is Emma DeStefano. I'm a senior this year at Craig, and I was a part of the Elevate program last year. When I was chosen to do Elevate, I was very excited to explore the business pathway because I was very unsure of what I wanted to do in the future. I was interested in international relations, but I wasn't really sure what I wanted to do with that. And Elevate really helped me solidify what career path I would like to do in the future. Because of my mentorship, business projects, attending business expos, listening to guest speakers, and touring different businesses, I've chosen to attend Xavier University to study international business next fall. My favorite part, part of Elevate was the mentor relationship. My mentor, Sean Everhart, works for Cargill Corporation in Minneapolis, Minnesota, in international business. He was a Craig graduate who went to UW-O'Clare and is now the North American ERP and Functions Lead for Cargill. He also lived in Belgium and operated, operations for Cargill for three years there. And he not only taught me about business, but he gave me a lot of life lessons about choosing a college and how to get involved while you're there, like studying abroad, finding a job, internships, and interviewing for a job. He conducts interviews for Cargill, so he's given me many helpful tips for making your resume, interviewing, and progressing within your career. And I still meet with Sean today, and he continues to be a valuable mentor to me. Business projects are another big part of Elevate. My first business project was with Mod Bloom, which is a small business in Janesville. My group project worked closely with the owner, Heidi Rossiter, and helped her business grow, her social media presence grow on Facebook and Instagram. And I was in charge of arranging the meetings with Ms. Rossiter, sharing survey results, and any additional information that we found that we didn't cover in our meetings with her. So I was the communications specialist. I learned how to work closely with a business owner, market a business, and how to consult with an owner on how to progress their business from that business project. And attending business expos, touring businesses, and leading, listening to guest speakers where other opportunities Elevate provided, and I really enjoyed. I liked listening to different perspectives of business leaders and learning about how they ended up where they are. We were able to hear from Diane Hendricks, who started out as a hairdresser and is now a multi-billionaire, Jamin Arnn, who started by going door-to-door selling office supplies and now owns a million-dollar office supply company, Oakley Ryan, who was another mentor within Elevate. And although she was not my mentor, I interviewed her, and she gave me helpful advice about choosing a college. And I also talked to her about her own career path. And there are many other business professionals who were very inspiring throughout the year and showed me, in business, you don't earn anything without lots of hard work. One thing that was unique about Elevate were all the opportunities to apply what I was learning in real-life situations. In addition, the classes we took applied to the business and finance environment. For example, we learned about finance, how to keep ourselves financially responsible, how the stock market works, how to invest in stocks. We learned about the US economy and did a real-life scenario of what it would be like to live underneath the poverty line. And international business, we analyzed numerous international case studies. One case study we looked at was about Brexit. After a whole group discussion, we made videos about our opinions. We gave numerous speeches in class, and we had constant discussions. So the learning was very interactive, which is something I, as a hands-on learner, really enjoyed and benefited from. Elevate didn't just teach me lessons in a classroom, but many lessons for life that I will use forever, and I'm so glad that I joined Elevate and was able to be a part of the program. Thank you. Do you have any questions, too? I can also answer those.
Wonderful, Emma. It's nice to see you again.
Nice to see you, too.
And I'm sure your mom and dad are watching. And we're all very proud of you. I'm sure your mom and dad is, too. Your, your mom's a wonderful teacher. So please don't close the door on being a teacher. And a little bit of a side note, because I'm a dear friend of your dad. He could use a little help with his business, so don't. So thanks very much.
Thank you.
All right, well, we'll finish up the presentation. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Emma does have a dance class to get to, so I might cut her loose if that's okay with everybody.
Yep.
We'll see you at school. I just want to end, you know, talking a little bit, and I'm going to turn this over to Mr. Elson here and have him talk a little bit about one of the program celebrations that, that I wanted to highlight. And the first one is our first annual case study competition, which took place in February this year. And I'll have Mr. Elson talk just a little bit about what that case study competition is. But essentially, what it was is an inter-district collaboration where Craig kids from Elevate and Craig kid, or Elevate kids from Craig and Insight students from Peewaqui, again, where our relationship has kind of come full circle, participated in a day-long competition where they eventually analyzed a case study. So I'm going to have Mr. Elson talk. Yeah, yeah. Well, I mean, one thing that we do, we want to highlight, though, is that, you know, for a long time during the pandemic, there was this narrative out there that students were falling farther and farther behind. And I'm not here to question that, because I know that there's a population of students out there that are, that are really impacted by the pandemic. But this opportunity is another example of where our students were leaping forward, right? They took the circumstances that they found themselves in. They jumped at the opportunity to collaborate with another district, work with another kids. Literally, the day before, they had never, they had never met these people until maybe the day or two before, where you, where you built into your instruction an opportunity to kind of meet one another for the first time. The next day, they're looking at a Harvard case study, and they're analyzing that, and they're participating in guest presentations, and they had breakout sessions to go learn with and from other professionals from Waukesha County and Dane County and Rock County. And then eventually, they participated in this competition. Unfortunately, I can't say our Elevate team won because we intermingled the teams. So there were kids from Insight and Elevate. So we couldn't say that Craig and Janesville were the champs, but certainly a wonderful experience. That's one program celebration that I wanted to highlight. Some additional program celebrations. There are new strands in Elevate that are in development, and we're excited to continue our work for that. We are hoping that we can look to develop things like a medical rotations Elevate strand with Mercy Health. We have two current Elevate students right now this year that are going to be our guinea pigs, and they're going to get to pilot that. One of your commissioners might know a little bit about that. But we have two students from Elevate that will be kind of test-running the rotations program. So if you think about medical rotations at the, at the medical, you know, school of medicine level, that's what we're hoping to do, but also work in that, that business component to it. We're looking at developing a strand in IT, and then we certainly want to mirror the economy here in Janesville, which is a manufacturing, heavy manufacturing base. So we'd like to develop over the next two years a similar pipeline for manufacturing. We're excited about at least four or five secure projects that are, that are set for fall projects, and we're going to lean a little bit on Mike again to see if there's any innovation tenants out there that are looking for more work. Also, we are excited about exploring the opportunity to bring in a digital media marketing curriculum. We're in the works with UW-Whitewater faculty to kind of supplement that and add that as a value-add to our curriculum. And then we have new partnerships that we're helping to develop. We have a site visit from Alcorn School District next week. They are coming on-site next week to see Elevate in motion, and they're interested in, in developing their types of programs there. And then we've been in communication with O'Kanto Falls in northeastern Wisconsin to see how that might fit into their program. So lots of things, lots of things to celebrate. Program needs, some things that we would always ask, or, you know, we talked about the vision for the future. We are looking to develop an advisory committee to really secure business sponsorships. We think that would create some monetary support and sustainable support if we have an advisory committee. That also will help us develop stronger relationships with mentors, project partners, and certainly develop opportunities for our kids to learn on-site visits. We are always looking for an opportunity to develop an off-site location. We feel like an off-site location creates that more professional component to it. And also, believe it or not, the professionals that partner with the program are actually more comfortable going to an off-site location than they are a high school. So we can find ways to do that. Curriculum resources are always opportunities for us to, to grow our program. And certainly, I think the biggest piece, too, and final, finally, is, you know, considerations for staff, staffing allocations. We know we want to grow this program. We know that we need teachers really committed to it. The first year of the program that we, that we had, you know, we were able to really have a three hours a day where our teachers were committed to it. And, and that has changed a little bit, and I understand the reasons why, but it would always be great, because a lot of people don't understand the amount of work that goes behind developing a project and monitoring a project or working with the mentors. And having three bodies to help that work with Elevate would always be better. But we make and do with what we got, and we're going to continue to make do with what we got and continue to grow the program. So those are the program needs, and I think that's it. Oh, the last piece I really want to highlight, and I don't know why I didn't stress this earlier, but ultimately, this is a perfect opportunity to demonstrate where the school district of Janesville and Craig High School, and not that Parker High School and other schools aren't meeting the promises that we've made to our community. Also, I think, as you've heard from Mike and Emma, there's different levels of success that can be measured out of this Elevate program that don't just boil down to a, let's say, a standardized test or a GPA, right? What we know, our kids are getting a really rich experience, and they're getting this great experience by working with business professionals. They're developing a skill set that's going to far surpass some of the indicators that are out there with, with, with regard to college and career readiness. So I just wanted to highlight the, the importance that this is one of our opportunities where we're demonstrating to the community where we're, where we're meeting our promises. So I'll leave it at that note, and I'll turn it over to the board to see if they have any questions for us.
Congratulations, because it's very impressive. Oh, next one, okay. I think the thing that is really impressive to me is the fact that you have 75 businesses and mentors involved in this. Two-part question. How many did you have the first year in 19, in 2019, in terms of businesses? And how are you increasing the awareness of the, the community itself about this one? Because I think it's, it's just an excellent program for hands-on learning.
Sure. So I would say mentors, we probably had close to 32. 32, because we had 32 kids enrolled. We, I think we shared a mentor or two with a few students. And, you know, we, we, meaning the team, kind of used our own individual network to go out and establish the projects for the first year. So, meaning the people we knew in the community, the people we could tap into. So that's how we, how we developed those relationships. And then really what, it's kind of organic how it grows, John, is it's, it's kind of, you know, word of mouth, it spreads, and people are like, huh, you're involved in that program, too? Or actually, one of the business projects we've got lined up for next year, she, Courtney Parakis, we're hoping to develop this with her, but she was a mentor, and now she's gone off to develop a small business. And, and we're hoping to lock in that project for next year. How, how are we promoting it? Well, in your, in your folders, you'll see an article from the Janesville Gazette about the case study. Also, another way to promote it is you. You all are advocates for this program now that you've learned much more about it. So if you know, like, any chiropractors out there that need any projects, then contact information's in there. But this is your opportunity now to go out and say, you know, I sit on the board, and, you know, people in other communities outside of Janesville can, we'd be happy to join. We, again, we've pivoted like the business industry has, and we can, you know, work with a mentor in Chicago or the Twin Cities, or, or we can work with a business that's out there. So you, you are going to be our best advocates, right, to go out and talk about the important work that's going on? I think we're going to be featured in the Jane, the Forward Janesville Quarterly Report. Patrick can attest to that a little bit. And again, just beating the streets and doing the work. And our kids do it. I mean, I think that's the best part about it. Maybe you have also received the Horizon Now survey that went out maybe two or three weeks ago about the business development going on down here. Our students wrote that survey and are going to disaggregate the data and push all that information out so that we can really make Janesville tailored to what the community wants. Thank you.
Yeah, Sean, pardon me, my mask broke them. That, I didn't have any safety pins with me. So anyway, is the state lines aren't a hindrance to where this can go, are they?
No.
Both mentors and, of course, businesses.
Right. Yeah, I mean, now you can see, we could connect with a mentor as far away from St. Paul to
That's true.
You know, we've, we've had mentors online with us, so, and we've been able to use the tools and resources that the district has for one-to-one devices and internet connection to really develop it.
Thank you.
So there really aren't any barriers to how we can connect with people any longer, and we plan to grow that.
Super program.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you guys for coming tonight and for, to President Myers and Mr. Pufal for letting them come and get on the agenda, because I think this is really important for the community to hear about, and like you said, we can be advocates for this. You know, Mr. Elson, thank you for always seeing Aubrey and the invitation that she got for this program. And, and to Mr. Miles and all the relationship he and Aubrey have built this year, because, because of that, she is going to participate in this, in this Mercy partnership, and what she started as a pediatrician. She's going to graduate this year, want to be pediatric- year, want to be pediatrician now. Because I, one of the things I want to call out, they have different roles on the teams, assigned to these projects. So my daughter's been a project manager, the other communications person like Emma, they all have a different role on the team. And because of that project management experience, she now maybe wants to do healthcare management. So this rotation will give her exposure to try a few different things. So, you know, working with Oakley and learning from her is, you know, something that's, you can't put a value on that. So I'm really grateful for this program. I'll do whatever you guys need to support it. And, and all the, and all the, help me any connections that we can. So thank you for doing this for our students.
I was just interested in the percentages of students that enroll versus juniors versus seniors. Do you see more juniors participating? Because then they get that experience before they decide to go into their senior year and then do colleges. It's kind of sets them on their pathway. Or what's the, what's the split? Or what have you been seeing over the last two years?
Next year's class, it's an almost direct even split juniors. We had 16 juniors sign up to be juniors, our 10th grade students who will be juniors next year and then seniors. So we had 16 and 16, and then we added a third student, a 33rd student. So it's pretty even split. The first year that we had, very similar numbers, right? It's not heavily weighted with our seniors and juniors. So the opportunity's out there for them to participate in what we believe is the business capstone class here.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. How do students get into the program? Is there a cap on numbers that can get in?
You have to be a junior or a senior. And you have to, of course, select for it. And you have to have a real business acumen, I guess, a real interest in business. There's no cap to it. You know, if we, if we have more than, you know, our allocated numbers and we have to build two sections. We haven't been there yet. We hope to someday. But, you know, if we go over that number and we have to staff it at additional sections, we will. Right now, we've been really close. So really, there's no, there's no application process. We do interview them just to make sure they understand some program components and real high expectations. But any student with, with an interest can do it.
So I'm just wondering now, I guess Superintendent Pufal, if we, if I'd have took a deep dive into the staffing plan, I would have seen these, you know, numbers-based FTEs. And so at this time, we're continuing to support this program through the budget. And if they do see an increase in enrollment, then that would just drive HR to add additional staff. Okay. So if you, you know, you kind of tipped on what you would need.
Mm-hmm.
You know, but what are, what are some of the things that we at a school board could do, you know, to help this program grow? Or what are some real specific needs?
Well, I guess I could turn it over to the teacher perspective. That question's there for him to answer. And I could tell you that from there.
I'm Fritz Ellison. I think Mr. Kane had introduced me, but, and I teach social studies and international business in this program. So last year, we were three staff, three hours a day with our planning period. So we were with the Elevate all morning. And then this year, it was one for Cindy and I. So we did get cut. It, it's, it didn't hurt as bad because of the pandemic. Surprisingly, we were able to make it work. But it is a pretty, pretty heavy cut in hours for that. So if we had more to do, we might, like with the lunch and learns and offsite things, it might have been a little trickier this year. But I think so far, we've, we've managed. But it was great. We, when we went to Pewalki about halfway through the year last year, just to check in with them, they were really impressed with our model. Like, we actually adapted their model to our needs. So we collaboratively worked and made one curriculum for three hours of the day. And it was sort of fluid as it went. So we were able to really be sort of in versus, you know, now I'm just in their fourth hour, and I come for 48 minutes, and off I go. So that was a little easier, that, that part of it. So I think that was, I think what you were going with.
Yeah, I think they were able to really develop a, engaging and high-powered instruction, instructional model when they were able to collaborate for those number of hours. And, and they were able to share the load of the work. Like I said, behind the scenes, there's a lot of, you know, there's a lot of work that goes in just managing one project. So, you know, now that's kind of fallen on, on the co-coordinator along with me, which is Brandon Miles. So who isn't here? Because he's got to strike me. Yeah?
Thank you.
I'm not sure if you can answer this question. Three years ago, you went over to Pewalki to look at the program. Now you have Okanto and Alcorn coming to look at your program. Where does Parker High School fall in terms of interest?
You know, we, we offered the opportunity for, for them at the time of our kind of going to experience it. And the opportunity is always there for Parker to pick this ball up and run with it over there, or certainly open the door over for Parker students to come over three hours a day to participate in it. That would probably require us to maybe adjust the course, the course offering and the course handbook. We can certainly do that through that.
So student at Parker could actually be involved?
I'm, I'm open to it if they have the interest. But, you know, I, you know, again, right now, I'm gonna let the administrative team over at Parker tell me, we've got seven kids that really want to do it. And then I would say, well, let's find a way to get it done. Yeah.
Well, thank you very, very much. It was wonderful. And it was a nice write-up in the paper.
Well, thank you.
I really enjoyed it. So.
I think I'm gonna stay on because.
Yes, because we've got a little something coming up here.
Thanks for coming in.
A little something, something.
You want me to just go right into it, Steve? All right. So I've already introduced Mike, and you've heard from him. But I think it's really important that we also recognize the community partnerships that really support our work. So again, Mike Matthews is here. And you know his background. But we're, we, we think it's really important and critical that we recognize him as one of our Janesville School, School District of Janesville Promise Keepers. So Mike's here to get a board recognition. So I'll turn it over to Superintendent Pufal.
Thank you very much, Sean. What an honor it is to have an opportunity to recognize Mike Matthews tonight. You know, Mike does so many things for this program and has from the very, very beginning, right? And, and, and Mike brings a rich experience and rich background to the program. But, but ultimately, what happens because of Mike's participation is the program immediately has credibility out in the community. Because people around the community know Mike. They know the kind of work he does. They know the kind of caliber of work he does. And they know he wouldn't associate himself with this if it wasn't something that really was bringing value, not only to these kids, but to the partners out in the community. Mike brings authenticity to our kids and into our classroom, right? As much as our teachers, you know, try, you know, to really help kids to understand and work with, you know, what the real world looks like, it's really impossible to really replicate without bringing those outside experts, those community experts in. And so Mike personally, and then also serves as a conduit, you know, to bring those other people out into the community and into our classrooms. And, and finally, Mike gives us a lot of access. Access to people, access to businesses, access to the partnerships that you've heard a lot about tonight. You know, whether that's mentors for kids, whether that's businesses or not-for-profits, he gives us, you know, that access that is absolutely essential for us to give kids the rich experience that you're hearing about tonight. And so, Mike, without further ado, it's my honor to recognize you with the Superintendent's Promise Keepers Award. The district has a set of promises, and you heard Sean make reference to those. And, and you absolutely help us embody and bring those promises to life. And so, Mike, thank you so very much.
Thank you so much, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I'll make it quick because you've heard from me already. I just want to say again that I, I am honored to receive this. The work that we are able to do in this community is a complete joy. So it's not an effort. And I do it with the support of the Janesville Innovation Inc. Board, and a lot of people in this community who make this possible for me to spend the time that I do working with this program. So I thank you very much, and I'm quite honored. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We get another year's work out here, Mike. Thanks, everybody.
That was awesome. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have now an update on our promises dashboard. Superintendent Pufal?
Thank you. Well, that's timely, you know, because just to kind of refresher again, the promises is what drives this kind of work to happen, right? You know, this, this opportunity to, you know, get kids involved and engaged in power learning, you heard that tonight, from all of the presenters up here. Some of them actually used those words. Some of them described it happening in action without using those actual words, the authenticity and the impact that has on getting kids to be college, career, and life-ready. And, and your promises, you know, your strategic plan is what drives that work. And we're working very hard to give all kids the opportunity to have this kind of rich culminating experience in, in all different career pathways. And little by little, we're building that out. Some of that existed, frankly, prior to the strategic plan. The house build is, you know, is probably the most well-known example of that. But, you know, Elevate is a program now, and you can see how that's morphing into different fields. It's business, but now it's turning into healthcare, and it's turning into manufacturing. And, and that'll continue to grow, right? We actually have similar programming at Parker High School. We do. It's not packaged in the same way, and it's not labeled in the same way. But John Zimmerman, frankly, has been doing this kind of work through his marketing and DECA classes with kids and providing these same kinds of opportunities to kids at Parker for many, many years, honestly. And so I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that. So ultimately, your promises continue to drive our work. They continue to drive us to form these kinds of partnerships and build these kinds of opportunities. Another example that you've heard about earlier this year that's in the process to be launched for next year is the Parker Arts Academy, right? And so we're continuing in all these different pathways to build out these options. It isn't gonna always be realistic to have everything at both schools. And so we will continue to have flexibility. And so if I happen to be an arts kid, you know, and that's my thing, well, and there's a special unique program at one school, then you'll have access to that program, right? Algebra's gonna be algebra. That's gonna be available at both schools. And English 10 is as well. But some of these really high-level programs, you know, really, we're gonna try to build them out in all of the pathways. And, and some will exist at one school, and some will exist at the other school. And, and, you know, kids can plug in in either direction as, as time passes into those programs. So we're excited about that. So just a couple of quick reminders tonight. We have a dashboard. You, you have a set of promises. And you might recall that back in March, we had a presentation, a mid-year update on the district improvement plan. And that, that district improvement plan ties directly to the, you know, the district's promises and how are we doing at the district level working on that. Just last, just at the last meeting, you heard a great presentation from Allison DeGraw and the Monroe team about the school improvement plans. And these things all tie together, right? So the, there's, there's a direct linkage, you know, between all of these things. And it all starts with the plan that you guys put together, your promises at the boardroom. And the district improvement plan, the school improvement plan, actionizes, you know, the work that the district is doing to move forward with keeping those promises. I know you know this, but it's been a little while since we've gone through the fact that the district has a dashboard. And so as much as anything, we know we have people who watch these things or watch the videos. And so I wanted to just really quickly, I'm not gonna run through all the indicators. That's not the point tonight. The point is, is to just remind everybody that A, we have a dashboard. How do you find it? How do you navigate through it? And what's in there when you get there? And so without further ado, the way you do that is you just go to the district's webpage. That's what you see scrolling across the screen right here tonight. Once you get into the district's webpage, right below all the pics that are scrolling across, you'll see a series of different options. And the second one in here is the district dashboard. And so you click on that dashboard link, and that takes you into those indicators. The front page of that dashboard, and again, I won't go through all of this, but the front page of this dashboard, it gets updated every year. And so it gives us a variety of demographic information and, you know, information about enrollment, information about the composition of our ethnic and racial composition of our kids, free and reduced lunch, disabilities, EL, et cetera. And it's just, you know, it's just informational. The real meat and potatoes of, of how we're doing in relationship to the specific promises is under the indicators tab. And so I'll have Patrick click on that indicators tab. Once you get in there, and I'll have Patrick just scroll here for a minute, but you'll see all the promises, you know, the school and student success, the relationships, culture and climate, finance, health and safety. And so for every one of your promises, there's a measure of success that's in this dashboard to update and keep the community informed about the progress that we're making in relationship to that particular measure. So we have kind of an anomaly going on because of COVID, right? So typically, we're able to update each of these measures of success annually, sometimes at different times of the year, depending on which one it is and when that data becomes available. But because of COVID this year, we actually aren't going to be able to update some of the measures of success because for a variety of different reasons, we won't have those particular data points. And so I want to just give a couple of examples tonight of, of a, of a measure of success or an indicator that, that is updatable, and one that isn't updatable. And to be able to show people how that looks when you click inside of it so that you don't wonder about, well, did they just forget to update this one? Or what's going on, right? And so, and then we actually have out of all of these right now, if I'm not mistaken, we have like nine of them where they're completely updated. We have nine of them that we're not going to be able to update this year, but we will be able to again, starting next year. And then I think we have two that we're still waiting on the data for yet that will get updated in the next month or so, once we have that information. So Patrick, I'm gonna have you click on one of the measures here. He's picking engaged and empowered learning. This is an example of one that is updated. When you get in here, this is the, the Bright Bite survey data that I know we've shared out with, with the board a few months back as well. And you can see the progress that students are making and that the staff are making towards meeting the goals that were outlined in the plan. You can see that in two forms on a bar graph. And then also, you can see the data points that represent the, the bar graphs underneath that. And this is, this, this is exactly the same format you'll see in each of these indicators when you click into those. Patrick, I'll have you back out of this one, and then jump into one different one where we don't have the ability to update it for this year. And so you can see here, this is a college and career ready indicators. And we have to have a whole bunch of, this particular one is a compiliation of not just one data point, but a whole, because the college and career is, is multiple indicators. And going back to last spring, we don't, we won't be able to have access to grade data, right? And so we can't update this because of that. And so Patrick's highlighted it. Thank you. This is what you'll see. You'll get in there, and you'll see 2020, and there's just nothing there. And so to hopefully help people to remember that, it's not that we forgot, it's just that it's not available. Patrick's highlighted the note there in blue that says due to COVID, the data's not available. And so you would see that exact same note in any of the measures where we're not able to update. And again, we anticipate being able to, moving into 2021, 21, 22 school year, being back on track to be able to track all of these different things. Because some of them were based on the traditional student goals. Some of them were based on, from those surveys. And of course, we had those temporary shorter surveys that were done this year. And so that's just an example of a place where, where the data's just different and not trackable. So again, you know, the, the kind of point of putting this on the agenda tonight wasn't to like go through each one of these individually, but just to give you a refresher on, you know, the fact that this information's at everybody's fingertips and, and that we encourage people in the community to stay informed and to, you know, to monitor our progress and to, you know, ask, ask questions and let us know how, how they can get involved to help us be successful, like we just saw here earlier with the Elevate program. Any questions? Bearing none.
All right. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right. Update on the student transportation contract. Mr. McCray?
So good evening. We'll keep this really short. Tonight's getting long. You may recall, Van Gelder is our current provider. And this late winter, early spring, we went out for a request for a proposal. So we had about four interested firms. Van Gelder was the only firm to submit a proposal. All right. So those proposals were due on April 14. So Commissioner Ardry, Thea Murphy from Student Services and I kind of participated in an interview with representatives from Van Gelder. We took a look at their pricing structure. And, you know, we took a look at their 70-year history with the district. They really provided us a cleaned up, if you will, proposal in terms of their services. And the issue of tonight, or really the point of tonight, is to let you know that we're gonna be working through some of those details in a new agreement, an agreement that will not continue to roll year after year. So. Um, so, uh, we're really looking forward to that. Uh, there are some things from the district, uh, if you will, administratively that we were looking at. Uh, for example, we purchased the software for routing. Ideally, we want our transportation provider to purchase the software for routing. That's ideally what they do, um, as well as the ability to track students or our riders. Uh, that's important for our claim, uh, to the Department of Public Instruction for transportation aid. Um, again, I referenced, uh, more of a term rather than a rolling. So that's, uh, that's good for us. And just some other details, uh, there's some onus on the district uh, in terms of good data that we want to provide our provider. Uh, for example, uh, when students register and parents register their students, I should say, um, if you qualify for transportation, you're automatically assumed that maybe you'll be part of the calculation for transportation. Uh, we really want, when students and families go through Infinite Campus, um, to make more of a selection. Um, so do you qualify? Yes, no, Monday through Friday, AM, PM. And so capturing that data with an Infinite Campus and sharing that data with our transportation provider so they can calculate and really get those routes nice and tight for us. Um, so we just really need to improve upon the efficiency of our transportation program. And those are some of the details, uh, that working with council, um, Mike Olrich, uh, that we'll work through, and, um, that's kind of where we're at right now.
Any questions, Mr. McCray? Yeah, Commissioner Hayward?
Do you know why we only got one of the four back?
Yeah, great question. Um, I will tell you that Van Gelder provides 16 buses outside of the route buses for co-curricular after-school activities. And that is a huge capital investment, um, essentially someone coming into the marketplace. That's, that's.
So the other three maybe aren't as prominent in the market in that, in this area with the capital, with the structure, infrastructure to have facilitated this anyway?
Yeah, I'd say infrastructure is it, um, one particular, uh, potential provider, um, that has probably several districts within a, uh, close proximity to us. Um, drivers are very difficult to capture. Um, so it's really, uh, perhaps cannibalizing their own workforce as a consideration in their commitment to their existing customers. So it's really a market basket of a number of items.
Thank you. Thank you. Question? Anybody else? All right, well, thank you for the update. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a recommendation now.
Whoops, sorry. So we have a recommendation now for our director of secondary education. Mr. Pufall?
Good evening. Good to be back at the podium again, um, after such a short break. Um, it's my, uh, pleasure to, um, recommend to you, Mr. Chris Mendenwald, um, for consideration as the director of secondary education for the district. Um, Chris, uh, Chris's career spans 16 years as a guidance counselor um, in three different school districts, um, and then, uh, a couple of years as an associate principal, uh, in Elkhorn, and finally, the last eight years, uh, serving as the high school principal, um, at Monroe High School. And so Chris really brings a rich, um, you know, background to this experience. We're really excited about, um, the opportunity to give him on board. We think not only, you know, is his credential strong, but he's the right fit for for our district and our team, right? He's, he brings a servant's heart, um, to this work. Um, he brings a passion to student learning, and and he really has the skillset that he needs to rally, support, and coach and grow, um, our secondary leaders, um, which is really an important piece of the work that that we're going to be asking him to do. Um, so we recommend to you, uh, that that, uh, Mr. Mendenwald be given a one-year contract for the 2021, 21, 22 school year, um, starting on July 1st. It's a 260-day contract, uh, similar to all, pretty much all of the other administrative contracts. Um, and he would receive a salary of $132,000.
Thank you. Uh, we, this is an action item, so we would need a motion to approve, and then, uh, and then we can go to discussion. Do we have a motion to approve?
Yes, motion to approve.
Second.
And a second. Okay, so we have Commissioner Murray, Commissioner Hayward. Okay, discussion, go ahead, Commissioner Murray.
I have to refresh my memory. Is this a new position or filling?
So this is a position that was an assistant director of secondary education that's been elevated to a director position. So it's a repurposing of a prior position, uh, or it's a re-leveling of that prior position. You're welcome.
Yes, Commissioner Hayward?
And just to clarify, other director positions have a one-year as well now. I know we did a lot of work to get all those more, s- all the same.
They're all standardized. It's pretty standard for us to do a one-year when it's a new hire.
Okay.
The rest of the directors are on two-year.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, so after the one-year, then they'd be eligible for a two. Okay, thank you.
Okay, other questions? Okay, so, um, so let's vote. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye? Opposed? Okay, that passes. That carries nine, zero. All right, thank you very much. So the next thing on our agenda is a conversation about and a possible approval of the Board of Education meeting schedule. Uh, so you've got this in your packet, and, um, and let's, let me just say that, um, this came about after our conversations with, um, Superintendent Pufall. The, this calendar, uh, reduces the number of meetings by three for the year. And basically, it takes out the, um, second meeting of the month, generally speaking. We we have certain months where we have been having only one meeting a month for, um, for several years, you know, like July and November and December and March, for instance. And, uh, those, of course, are holiday months or vacation, you know, times, uh, and that kind of thing. Um, it, uh, we're, we're thinking that there are some months, like in January, for instance, where we have other board events, like the Waspa Convention, that is, um, that is a, an important event that where a number of us meet, that kind of, that having another meeting past that was probably not necessary. And, um, and there are some, some, uh, times during the month of looking at our, and considering our calendar, I'm sorry, sometimes during the year, considering our calendar, where we're just simply not as busy. And so it was our, our view that, uh, we should reduce the number of meetings for those months. Now, there's a certain months, of course, that you're always going to have two meetings, like October, because that's budget month. And, um, what, like February, right? Because that is about insurance and staffing plans. Those are things, there, there's a lot going on. And so, um, so, a- and of course, and the feeling, of course, is that we have really wonderful, established committees that do a ton of work, um, as well. And those, of course, will keep going, you know, and and, uh, the engagement there as well. And of course, I'm going to be meeting with, uh, Superintendent Pufall on a regular basis. So that was the rationale, okay, behind some of our our thinking. And so, um, uh, this is an action item as well. And so I was wondering if we have a motion to approve and a second, and then we can have our conversation about it.
Motion to approve.
Okay, I heard it this way and then this way. Okay, Commissioner Millard, uh, with our motion, and Commissioner Herta with our second. All right, thank you very much. So, um, weigh in, folks. What do you think?
Yeah, I only have question one month, and I'm trying to remember back over quite a few years now. June, it seems like we've had meetings in, because of the end-of-the-year budget and any kind of things. Would it be smarter to put it in as a meeting and we could cancel if necessary because we took care of it the first week of the month? I don't know. It's just, I'm kind of a little bit disturbed about it because I know we've, we've done it sometimes before where there wouldn't be one, and then we called a special meeting. So I'm just kind of thinking, is that the right way to go or not? And not only Kathy, not only you, but Greg could probably add in a little bit more there, too. And also, uh, Dan, our finance director. But it usually pertains to finances at the end of the budget year. So, thank you.
So I think the way this calendar is set up, really July would be the focus, probably, that first meeting in July, then, uh, beginning, the very beginning of the school year. Um, financially, I think that would be fine. And we can always add in the meeting if necessary. I think that's the beauty of this. We don't have to take action to cancel, but we can easily add in a meeting.
And and we were also trying to be very cognizant that we never went six weeks without a meeting. You know, that there was, that there will always be at least, uh, a formal meeting every six weeks, so. Other, yes, Commissioner Herta?
I just want to thank you and appreciate the time that you tried to sit down and be efficient with our time, um, both with administration's time and both with school board members, because I know a lot of us also work, um, and have children as well. So I appreciate that thought process that went into this and very strategic and very efficient as well. So I appreciate it. And I'm, I actually thought the opposite, Carl, is that you can always add, but you can't remove. So I was just of the opposite thinking that if we need to add one, it's very easy to add one if if we need.
That's true.
To consider the extra workload or things that come up that need to be addressed.
Thank you. Any other comments? Greg?
Just want to say, so what this calendar does, it highlights the committee's work. So it becomes paramount that we make sure that we are in attendance to the various committee meetings. Even if we, as other board members, attend as guests, then, you know, you might not be a part of the committee, but it might be, you know, really important for certain committee meetings to be a part of. So, um, just wanted to throw that out there.
And I I want to say that I really appreciate that thought because, you know, and I've been on, um, a number of our committees myself, and I've seen it, I've seen over the years since I've been on the board, how they have gelled and and the kind of work that they do. And, um, and I really think that our committees are incredibly effective, and, um, and it's an efficient way of managing this district, I think. Yes. Did I say a hand over here? No? Anybody else? Yes, Carl?
I added it for conversation so we could see the different things that were, the the majority felt like and the different reasons we don't. Because the public looks at it and says, oh, my goodness, look at, no meetings. But it isn't that. We are working at it.
Exactly.
And that, and maybe a little different, uh, method, but it works good. Thank you.
Okay, so seeing no further comment, I guess we'll just call the vote. Um, all in favor? Signify by saying aye. Aye? All opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. And you know what? I just realized that I'm not naming all the commissioners every time we have a vote. Should I be doing that? Okay, all right. I just was thinking about, that's what other presidents have done, and it just occurred to me that that I hadn't been doing that, so. Okay, great. Just want to make sure I not, I'm not, I just want to make sure we don't have to do all this all over again. Just kidding, just kidding. That was a joke. That was a joke. Okay. All right, thank you all very much. And so, moving on, then our next, uh, order of business is to cancel the May 25th meeting, um, for those same issues because there's just not enough going on, and we were able to tackle everything